Looks like we're on air.
All right, I will call this school committee business meeting to order on August 18th at 6:30 PM. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Yell, do you want to call the roll, please?
Leah Reiden. Here. Julia Walker.
Present.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Breanna Higgins.
Here.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
Andrew Boger.
Here.
Okay, and so our first item on the agenda is to convene to executive session. So I'll take a motion to convene to executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters. We will reconvene into open session after the session has concluded. And we'll need to do a roll call, so can somebody please make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Leah Reiden. Here. Julia Walker.
Yes.
Sarah Hall.
Yes.
Brian Callahan.
Yes.
Breanna Higgins.
Yes.
Kathleen Shaw.
Yes.
Andrew Boger.
Yes.
All right, so we will convene to executive session and plan to return around 7 o'clock.
I should have brought a sweater. I thought about that as I was rushing out the door.
Over hair conditioner.
Yeah, we can't let you change so much today. All right, Joanne, I realized we don't have public comment listed on our agenda, but we should provide it. But we can go ahead. Start with that, yeah?
We can start with that, yeah.
Wait, let's give what happened to the mayor.
We have for a split second.
Should we get lost?
All right, we will start with public comment. We'll give the mayor half a second to come back. Brianna, sorry, we have more stuff to help do. All right, we're ready to start when you are. We realized we should probably start with public comment even though it's not on here.
Oh, okay. So have we already opened and done everything? We get the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, you did.
Welcome back, everybody. All right, we're gonna get the business meeting going from here on out, and we would like to invite anyone to come up for public comment.
So come on up to the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Christine Noir, and I'm a parent of two students that are part of the Newburyport School District. A parent of the union that was set last Friday, and the agenda from pocket. I do have some questions about the management and operational of the district improvement plan, and specifically around the human resources component of that. I see a lot of any results, but I don't really see the plan. Like, what are the steps? And I would like that to be documented clearly for use for members of the community, as well as the implemented for all hiring processes within the district. So, people that recruit and encourage drivers is kind of vague. You know, I'd like to know more specifically and have that documented as to what that is and what the process for hiring looks like. I know that with the contracts for the unions, there are certain steps and procedures that should be followed. The contract's a little vague as well. It doesn't really differentiate between teaching positions and educator positions and other staff positions. The contact refers to vacancies, but then it gets a little bit fuzzy. And it's the same in the policies on the district website. So my request here, my feedback here, is to have more specifics that can be referred to for anyone interested in what that process looks like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone participating online? Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the warrant.
Yes, we have a warrant. A move that the following named bills in Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $466,644.63 would be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We all received copies of the detailed warrants in two groups, one for fiscal year '25 and one for fiscal year '26. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From the vice chair votes aye. Okay, next item is approval of meeting minutes from June 16th. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
One more second.
Second.
Somebody has a second.
We still need a second.
I wasn't there, so I don't, can I second it?
Yeah, I moved it.
You can, you can still move and approve. Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll just say that I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't at the meeting and I didn't review the minutes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And how many abstentions? Two, two abstentions. Okay. Ms. Hall and Mr. Crowley. You can vote on minutes even if you aren't there. But that's fine, I'm abstaining. I'm not judging. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the status of the memorial beech tree, which my household is sadly, very sadly worries.
Just wanted to bring the school committee's attention, the beautiful tree that's been out in front of the high school for many, many years, which was dedicated to Emmett C. Knight, class of 1932, who was killed in action on December 9th, 1944, Lorraine France. We've had multiple tree experts look at that tree, and it's gonna have to come down. So we just want to make the school committee aware of that. We're in the process of planning a new dedicated memorial and kind of what that's gonna look like, and I know we're reaching out to relatives to see if there are people here for the Knight family that can, you know, be part of that planning process. So we just wanted to bring everyone's attention because everyone does love that tree, and it has a lot of meaning to a great Newburyport resident that gave his life, ultimate sacrifice.
Yeah, I mean, I can start by just making a comment. I mean, I do, I would, I know you're trying to decide how best to continue the dedication of the memorial, but I would personally like to see us strongly consider replacing it with another tree, given its location is so significant and very busy. given its location is so significant and very visible. I mean, I, I, how many, that tree was very old, so.
Very old.
Took a long time, I'm sure, to get to that height and width. But, anyway, if that could be done, it would be great to see another tree there.
Open for suggestions as we move forward.
Nice dogwood. Would be good. Older one.
Any other?
Well, I love those trees.
One thought I had is if some of the wood from the tree, when it comes down, could be saved and somehow incorporated into something that could be in the school in terms of carving it into something involving students in the process, maybe working with a local woodworker, carver type person. I got somebody in mind.
I love that.
I just think it's just, you know.
Like a big long table, they can shine up.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's so many different things.
Well, because if you have the kids woodworking class, they'll, when they tear it down, they bring the guy with the giant planer that cuts it to boards and they'll dry it for a year, and then the kids can make it into something.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah. I think the phase one is we're gonna have to, we'll take it down and we'll save some of the wood.
That'd be perfect.
We'll go from there.
Great. Well, I mean, not great about the tree, but great suggestion. Any other comments or feedback?
I mean, 1930.
Yeah.
The tree's had a good run.
It's had a very good run. It's such a.
Yeah.
The climbing tree. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a report out from me on the draft goals that we developed at our school committee retreat. And there's a copy in the packet of the draft, so I welcome any suggestions on the proposed goals. Again, this is, um, did I say January to June? Oh, I meant to update that at the top to, is this the right version? I sent an old version? No. So I forgot to update the top, I'm sorry. It should say goals for July 2025 to the end of basically this year. I thought we could, I like the idea of thinking about the whole school year, but maybe revisiting these when the new school committee starts in January. So, a lot of these were updates to our prior goals that we had developed in January. The, there were some additions to the promoting community support for education. The actions, we added a few more community groups to collaborate with directly, and then identifying opportunities for expanding outreach of the school committee newsletter and other communication tools under the support for continued improvement in academic performance. I think that was still basically continue having report outs from the teaching and learning subcommittee, also consider budget recommendations on the cellphone use in schools, having a presentation on, on progress, because we've already adjusted the policy and if we need to make any adjustments further. The focus on creating a supportive school learning environment for all students, ongoing work with the ECP project, which I think we still have yet to hear from because that's still in progress. And then the continuing to implement a framework for measuring academic progress in response to assessment data. Added a few report outs. I think, I think this is what we discussed, so please double check that, but it was to have a report out to the full school committee on the school improvement plans, along with MCAS results in the fall, then have a mid-year presentation in January, February on progress to date, and then an end of the year review. And then the final one that was added was the providing opportunities for elevating student voice. And there were some ideas proposed at the, at our retreat, thinking about ways to increase interaction with the student rep, working with the student council, and creating opportunities for dialogue with students in schools at where they, going to where they are, basically. Anything that jumps out as missing or needs rephrasing? All right. So I'll change the heading. It says the correct date, and then I'll reshare with everybody, but if anybody does wanna discuss any of these further at a future meeting, we can always consider that as well. These are sort of ongoing goals that we can always revisit and revise as needed. Any further comments or questions on that? Okay. All right. And then finally, a presentation from superintendent on the district improvement plan. We, well, not a presentation, but we all got a copy of the district improvement plan, which was introduced at our, at our retreat, and then an updated version was in the packet. You wanna say anything about it?
No, we just, I think, give us an opportunity for school committee to add comments or, you know, different areas. I think that was the goal for this, this meeting, take them back and then implement them within the district improvement plan. But I just, I, I think it's a pretty comprehensive plan. I think it ties into a lot of the goals of the school improvement plans, you know, with a major focus on math literacy, playful learning, and then I continue to work with the pathways at the middle school and the high school. So, those are the, the big academic pieces. And then what I also did going into next year's evaluation is tied in the standards for the superintendent. So there's the management operations, there's things that we've been doing that we're gonna continue to do that work, community outreach, family outreach, and then professional culture, so. And I think at, at the retreat, that's kinda what we presented and give people opportunities for feedback on the district goals.
Can you speak quickly about the relationship between this district improvement plan and the school improvement plans, which we'll see later on this fall?
Yeah, I think very similar to, especially the academic learning goals and the student learning goals. You'll see within the district, within the school improvement plans, a focus on the math, especially the work that's come out of the vertical math team, our continued work with the literacy. And then the two big initiatives with the playful learning at the elementary school that we implemented last year to really kinda enhance that. And then also the pathways, grant program, where we're working with college and career readiness for the middle school and the high school. So I think overall, you'll see that when, when you'll see the school improvement plans, you're gonna see a lot of those similar goals more at the school level, day to day, versus the big district goal level that we have. And I think that was a lot of the input in the, was that we received, you know, through school committee last year, beginning in October. And then I also believe the establishment of the teaching and learning committee, I think, was very helpful to bring some, I think, direction and clarity to some of those goals, and we continued that work throughout the summer. So, that, that's a big piece of that. And then also when we're looking at school environment, community outreach to parents and families, and operations, you'll start seeing some of those goals also. For example, we did a lot of work on the attendance issue last year. And so you'll see the attendance goals within the school improvement plan, but for us, it's also in our operations that we wanna continue that work. And then professional culture in the sense of, you know, the PBIS, the flex time at the NOC, and then also our student advisory at the high school level ties that into the, you know, social emotional piece for our students. So I just think that you'll see a lot of similar goals more at the linear level, like, you know, how is it being impacted? How's playful learning being introduced at the president, also at the Mullen? It's gonna be addressed, but it's gonna look a little bit different. You know, if you recall, Discovery Fridays was a really big impactful learning opportunities for the Mullen students, where they're going to the library and having choice around STEM. So, I think that's, for the district, I think really focusing on the academics is a big piece. So that math vertical team that worked all year, you'll see math goals throughout, I think, every building. So that's kinda how they, they tie in.
Yeah, and, and can I say, like, the school improvements, there's, there's be more granularity as to the detail. So like, for example, if we take the human resources goal, which is, you know, working with the principals, but you might see more specific items related to staffing and strategies for staffing in that school based on the needs of that school.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. You'll see like special education.
Right.
Programming at different schools.
And then versing. Snapping needs.
Exactly.
Okay. Any, any other questions or suggestions? Yeah?
Yeah, this is a specific question. And I don't know if this is an error, maybe on page four, where it says student learning goals at the top. For K-12, vertical math team meeting agendas and products, over on timeline, it says annual. And I wasn't sure why it said annual. I know we had that really impressive presentation from Mark Littlefield with teaching and learning, and I know that that's an ongoing, it seems like other things say ongoing or.
Yeah.
A span.
That's really ongoing, so the annual is to review. By the end of the year, these pacing guides and unit plans will be, it's an ongoing process, so you'll have the.
Like an annual update?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't saying that that's.
They're not just gonna be once a year.
That was my, that was my question, I had a feeling that was maybe not what was intended there. Okay, thank you.
We can provide some clarity to that.
Other comments or questions? Yeah. Remember Higgins?
Okay, I have a list. I'm sure you were expecting this. I think three, three main things stuck out to me. First of all, this is a great document. You've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think it's fairly transparent on, it, it's super helpful for me to just see, okay, what are all the things the district is working on? I think it's great for the community to read through this. A couple areas of, of feedback, and they're kind of all in the same vein, but specifically, you know, if, if everything is a priority, then nothing is, and there's a lot of goals in here. And because of that, it just feels like things can get lost in the shuffle because there's so many goals. And if you just take the student learning by itself, you have a math and ELA goal for all students, students with disabilities, and EL format, EL students, I mean, that's five times to five, 25 goals just in that section. It's just a lot. And so I was, it just made me think, okay, well, what is the data supporting the decision on these goals? And I, you know, I could have gone back and done a historical read, which would be more useful, but I, I was just looking at the data in the appendix. And, for instance, in math, at least the non-high school level, all students in math met the target. All EL students in math exceeded their target, and students with disabilities had no change. So for me, it would say, oh, okay, our data, our data is telling us that we really need to focus on, in, in K-8 with our students with disabilities, you know, as like the bulk of the action steps, whereas the bulk of the action steps in here, I think, affect all students as opposed to like being really narrowly focused on that one. Similar in ELAs, just sort of looking at, well, where does the data show that all of our energy priorities need to be kind of focused on? And where do things seem to be doing okay, just, you know, chugging along as they are? So, that was one piece of feedback. A second piece of feedback was that some of the goal, and I know we've talked about measurable, but some, this could be semantics, but it's just the way that I read it and understand it, is that some of the goals I see as like a vision statement, because some of them are measurable and some of them are not. So, you know, like, just in the first one, it says our goal is that all students will have access to high-quality math instruction. And then under there is the measurable goal. So I kinda see one as like a vision statement, the second is the goal, but in some other cases, you, it feels like it only has the vision part and doesn't say exactly what that goal is. And I, I had a couple of illustrative examples for you, and, you know, again, this is building on the, what's a priority? Because I, I don't think it's worthwhile to keep this document as is, as long as it is, and then for me to go through and say, oh, can you make everything in here measurable? Like, that just seems like a, you know, oh, just a waste of time. But if you were really going to pare down, like, what are our priorities? You know, I'm looking on, I have your old documents, I'm not sure if my page five is your page five, but it's student learning goals, outcome and measurable evidence, administrative observations for building thinking classrooms and discourse strategies in math classrooms. To me, I think that's your, that's your big goal. Like, I think that, that would be the goal under instruction, because your goal is not to provide professional development. Your goal is, like, what observations are we going to see of those strategies in math classrooms? And how we get there is providing PD. But like, your, your goal is the observations, you know, is what is actually coming out of it. And one other illustrative example, actually, the bullet point after that. Your K through five BOY, MOY, ELY math data protocols result in classroom intervention. Like, I think that's, that's your goal. Like, I almost just feel like that and the first column should be switched, where effective classroom intervention monitored by student data plans, that's your goal. And how do you get there? Use of data protocols, intervention strategies, things like that. So, I know that's semantics, but I do think it's, you know, somewhat important. And then just a last comment in this, again, builds on the priorities, is as a way of potentially pairing this down, is like, what are specific initiatives that are gonna be lifted in each section rather than an overview of the department description? Like, for example, I think the, the budget or the HR, it sort of just provides an overview of like, what does the budget department do? What does the HR department do? I'm, I'm not sure if that's needed. Like, do you need a, a column or a row for every department? Or is there a specific initiative that your HR department is like lifting off this year? Like, is there a particular practice they're gonna change and it's like, this is our goal for the year? Or are they continuing operations as normal? And if it's continuing operations as normal, I mean, that's fine, I'm just not sure it needs a row, if that makes sense.
That's good, good feedback.
Yeah, I think those are really helpful, remember Higgins? I think the lot of the content is here, it's just how, if you wanna, you know, I think, agree, simplifying or reorganizing in a way that clearly states the priorities and ties them to goals that are measurable. So even if some of this content is more of a statement, objective, or like a vision, and then trying to figure out how to restate it so that it's more of a measurable goal. And maybe if you have specific comments, you could follow up with the superintendent to share those?
Yeah, sure. And, you know, I just wanna make clear, like, my comments are just, you know, supposed to be beneficial to you. This is a lot like a, you know, bureaucratic exercise to make this look pretty. I just feel like at the end of the year in June, it's most helpful for the district if you can go back and say, this was my goal, did I meet it?
Right.
And it's, it's hard with the document exactly as written for you to go back in June and say, did I meet all of these things? Because in some places, it's, it will be hard for you to measure.
Pull out the priorities and.
Yeah.
So for the, the district is providing that vision, and then, you know, to get more specific, through the school improvement plans, you'll probably.
Right.
See how they're meeting those math goals. Like, it's gonna probably look different at the present with the Mullen.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
That's true. Any other comments or questions for the superintendent? So, superintendent, do you think you'll probably come back with one more draft before we go? Okay.
That was, the goal for me was to get your input.
Yeah.
Bring it back to the team, kinda go through it.
Okay.
And then we'll, you know, we'll present it.
Okay. So I think, with that in mind, maybe if anyone else has specific suggestions and wanna share that directly with you, between, maybe give, give them time to prepare for the next presentation. So like, over the next week, if you have comments you wanna share with the superintendent so that he can incorporate that into the next iteration. That would be great.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, okay, so now we can go into subcommittee updates, starting with finance subcommittee.
Uh, we, thank you, we met on, what day was that? The 14th, last week. Member Walker was absent. The general budget discussion, the fiscal year '26 allocations got released. I don't know, superintendent, if you wanna say more about the federal funding, but we got some of the funding that was being clawed back or whatever for ELL and translation things. There's some new special education costs coming in, but the budget has a $300,000 contingency for that. I don't know if you wanna go into that or wait until we approve these minutes at our next meeting next month. The high school video lab we talked about, that is gonna be done by the end of September. I've been there. There was a contractor change, so there's a little bit of delays, but it looks super cool. And I was asked to volunteer to design the wall art that's in the hallway, so that's gonna be fun. It's in the hallway, so that's going to be fun. We put that order in a couple days ago, so it's huge, like eight-foot letters that say video lab. Very fun. We tried to establish our meeting schedule, but I didn't want to get into it because Member Walker wasn't around. But our next meeting will be September, what is that, eighteenth at nine in Central Office. And there was some discussion about improving communication between the city council and the school committee regarding budget and finance. As everybody knows, I will be the board re-counselor starting in January. So that's going to be one of my goals in that role, is helping this get good again. And Superintendent Gallagher suggested creating a quarterly ad hoc group versus one or both of these bodies making an education committee. Because it gets kind of messy there, like, whose meeting is it?
Right.
Right? So the ad hoc thing was a good idea. We can certainly talk about how that will work. Mr. Bogr asked about the status of A I initiatives in the schools, how we're addressing it, and if we should even talk about it. Superintendent hasn't had an update about upcoming training for leadership and staff. And that was that. I just want to say thank you to funding instructor Ethan Manning for writing these minutes for me, for my notes. Thank you. Yes, our superintendent wants to go into the federal funding.
Yeah, and we, the state got good news over the summer that some of those federal funds that were frozen, you know, Title Four, Title Three were unfrozen, so.
Can you tell people what those mean?
So we had.
No, I mean, what Title Four and Title Three mean?
Title Four and Title Three and Title Two really assist with our English learners' families in translations. So it just supports newcomers moving into the district and students that are already here in the district. So those funds support those programs that we have. So that was really known that those funds were released. I do believe, working with Mr. Manning as we start preparing the budget for next year, we don't know what, what's going to happen. Because those funds were already approved in D C. They were frozen but then released. So with the administration, you know, looking at support for our English learner families, well, we may have to anticipate some of those funds not being there for next year. So I just think it will be a budget, as we develop our budget, to make sure that we anticipate. You know, we'll be hopeful that those funds will continue to be there. But if not, we should be ready to support our families no matter what. So, so that was, that was good news for us over the summertime. And I think that was just it for those. We don't have a high populations versus some other cities and towns. But all funding does, does help. That comes from the federal government for us. The Title One, and we were nervous, Title One and special education funding, but those have been fully funded. We learned that before the summer break. So that was, that was good news. The other piece is A I. I don't have it on my superintendent's report, but, so we're partnering with MIT that has been working with other districts on the benefits of, of A I in the sense of how to start incorporating those strategies within the district. And to make sure, and the whole goal of that is the idea of the state trying to be ahead of A I instead of, I think a lot of districts were caught off guard when cell phone technology came. So the goal is not to, to be ahead of it, not to be reactionary to A I. So we're working with MIT. We're doing a training with our lead teachers on August twenty-first, along with our administration, and working with former Commissioner Riley, who's also part of the MIT A I team. So we're going to do our training in August and train, you know, our leadership plus our teacher leaders. And then the goal is for our full day of P D in January. MIT is coming back, and we're going to get a whole day of A I on the full day of professional development. And really just utilizing it how it can be utilized, but also really looking at minimizing risks for students and staff and things like that. So it's a full professional development from, you know, geared to beginners who haven't utilized A I to some staff that are kind of comfortable with it, using like Chat G P T. And then some advanced work for some of our staff. So we really just want to prepare for that. Because we know the advancement of technology is, it's coming fast and furious. And, you know, so we want our staff and students to be prepared for that.
This may be beneficial. I didn't think we'd get to A I under the FinCom subcommittee, but.
Costs.
But I guess this might be a good topic for a future school committee presentation. Because I, I would like to get a better sense of what the MIT training is focused on. Because, you know, I guess one way to address A I is to have people taking handwritten tests in the classroom. So is that the kind of thing MIT? I, I would guess that MIT is probably not going to recommend that. But I would be curious to know that. So maybe this is something that we could, we could have a future school committee chat about. I, I also, there's a part of me that's wondering if, if there might be implications for some of our, our policies, or we might want to think about setting some policies at, at the district level. And Mr. Bogr, it also makes me wonder if we want to add something about this to our goals for this next six months. Because I know you brought this up before. Should, would that be worth thinking about, adding this, something related to A I, just as a school committee goal?
I was thrilled to hear. I, I guess I had missed the fact that the superintendent put in the, the trainings in place. So that was really positive to hear. I think, you know, anything we can do to get ahead of it is great. I, it would be, I, I don't know what this would look like, but if there's some sort of committee down the line that looks at this, maybe collectively with the administration or with the faculty and the school committee, that would be, I think, maybe a lot of rest a little easier or something.
Okay. So maybe I'll, maybe I'll propose we add, add some sort of A I, a goal related to A I, similar to what we did with the cell phone policy last, last time? I'll craft something and add it and share it next time? And then we can decide how best to go forward. Not, not in like spirit of trying to micromanage, but just so that we, the school committee is also getting educated about this topic, which is changing every day.
And, and I think for, for us, we're not like implementing, you know, A I setting in September. But what we want is having the experts that are utilizing A I in schools throughout, not only, MIT is not only utilizing it in the United States, but also throughout the world. And then how that technology, number one, you're providing safeguards. And that's the number one goal. And then number two, how it could be utilized to benefit students. So that's kind of our goal. So do the training for us in the summer. And then dedicate a whole day of it to educate our educators, you know, regarding A I technology and kind of what to expect, you know, in the future with, with schooling. Because it, it is, it is coming here. So we just want to make sure we're prepared.
It's already here.
It's already here. So.
Any questions on the finance subcommittee slash A I?
We're going to make sure Mr. Manning doesn't give detailed notes anymore.
Anything on policy subcommittee?
We need to schedule.
We need to schedule our first meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Shaw's on it. Communications subcommittee, anything?
Yeah. It's interesting, I was actually targeting Thursday, September eighteenth as well. When you have the FinCom meeting, I don't know how.
I was at nine AM.
Would you, how would you feel about doing a double header rather than meeting at five? Would that be preferable? Like, if we made it right after?
I mean, I can meet in the morning if, if I worked with.
Yeah, that would be preferable, actually.
Okay. What's reasonable, like ten thirty?
No, we're, we're under an hour generally. Ten o'clock.
That's, I'm asking you, I'm asking the FinCom. Okay, I'm asking the FinCom folks, though. I don't want to cut you short.
Oh, right, yeah, because you.
I also don't mind waiting if, should we just say ten?
It's just us on communications, right?
It's the three of us.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll be done before ten o'clock for FinCom.
I'm going to ask A I what they think.
Sure.
Who should do.
Let's say, let's say ten o'clock.
That's worse for me.
All right. And then maybe we can just use that same, or do you use the conference room space typically?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Yell, would that be reasonable for us to just book it for an extra hour, that space? You're on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that reminds me, you mentioned the ad hoc. I would definitely be interested in being a part of that if, if I'm elected to council. And I, I could see the communications subcommittee kind of morphing into, into that, the quarterly ad hoc. I, I mean, that was our main purpose in crafting this. And we, I think we've hit a lot of our goals in terms of increasing communication through the newsletter and the community. We can talk about that at the meeting, but I just think that that's just something to think about moving forward.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. Teaching and learning subcommittee, Member Higgins, any updates?
We have not had our first meeting of the year yet, so. To be D.
Okay. So teaching and learning and policy need to schedule something, probably in September, do you think?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Okay, and then the superintendent evaluation, Mayor, any updates?
Did everyone get the email from the superintendent?
This afternoon?
We got one this afternoon. But did everyone get a, a link to the Google Classroom?
Google Classroom, right.
Yeah, there were two messages, right? Yes.
I don't know if I got the link one, but I wanted to make sure everyone else got it. But I'll, I'll go back and check. But I did get your email this afternoon.
Email, okay.
Yeah. But that, that could just be me. I, I'll go back and check that.
You probably want the mayor on there.
Well, minor detail.
And Mayor, can you remind us what's the due date for completing the evaluation form? Is it the end of August or?
I thought we wanted to try to get it done by the end of August if we could. I know that's kind of a tight window. I'm open to changing that. But I thought we kind of wanted to get it done to get back into here for our first meeting in, in September.
Which is, I think, the second.
It was the second. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And maybe just, we could just confirm how we're getting input to you. Are we?
Yeah, I can go with that. So let me just make sure the, the mayor is included first.
Yeah. Did both emails come from you?
Yes.
Okay.
The, so when you open up the Google Classroom, I provided the reflection. Which has a lot of the information. There's all the Friday memo, there's resource in there, Friday memo, superintendent rubric and all of that. What we've done, instead of keeping the evaluation in a Google Doc, because a Google Doc is shared with everyone, what we did is we made it into a Word. So people can individually fill out their evaluation there and then send it off to you.
Okay.
Which I think is probably a, a better, a better use of the, the evaluation process. If there's anything else that you need, feel free to, to let me know. I did not add a lot of documents and things like that because I felt like that would be redundant. A lot of it's posted on our website, and many of you have been, have already seen all of our budget documents. So I felt like, you know, how, how Mr. Callahan gets when he sees more documents, so.
Yeah, Friday memo has all that stuff.
It has all that stuff. And what I also did, part of the reflection is I went through the Friday memo, and we pulled out a lot of the, throughout the year, I think, a lot of the discussions that we've had, some highlights. So I really believe you have enough information. But, but if you don't, let me know. But there should be adequate information, I think, for you all to, to review and, and fill out the superintendent evaluation form.
So it's a little different from the last time. Those of us who participated last time, we had this superintendent evaluation form as a Google survey kind of doc. And in this case, there, one of the documents in that Google Classroom is a Word document that we each individually should fill out and then send to the mayor. Email to the mayor, not, don't send it to him. Yeah, email it. Does that make sense to everybody? So you just save that individual document yourself, fill it out, and send it to the mayor.
And I think if I remember correctly, we decided that everyone's submission would be, kind of be in the appendix of the final report, and then we'll do kind of like an executive summary for each, each question answered. Okay.
That was, that's why I kind of did it that way. Because I think what, how you wanted it. You'll have the individual evaluation from everyone, and then you can just do the executive summary.
Okay.
So if anybody is not able to access, please do reach out. You have to join the Google Classroom. Yes.
Mayor, when would you need or want those by?
It's a great question. I think we.
Which I asked a few minutes ago.
I think we said we'd try to get it done by the end of the month. I know that's a tight, tight window, but try to finish by the end of the month. And then we'll try to compile it all before the January, September second meeting.
So end of the month, probably a good goal would be to get it to the mayor by the twenty-ninth, which is next Friday.
And again, if everyone thinks that's too short of a window, I mean, we could move it to the second, second meeting in September? That's still right in the timeframe that we typically would take it.
Yeah, I think.
Okay. So, all right, so should we, and then that also gives you more time to compile.
Right, sure. No, I was, I was ready.
You were ready to send your, send it to your name.
Okay, so the second meeting, by second meeting in September.
Okay. So we should try to get it to you then. Our second meeting is on the, actually, our second meeting is weirdly the twenty-second.
We did it a week later because of the preliminary election. I think it was some, oh, oh, that and also doubling up with council. I just, it ended up.
Yeah, council only has one meeting in September, and it's the fifteenth. So, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so we bumped it a week because there's, there's five Mondays in the month. So it seemed reasonable at the time.
So why don't we, our goal is to get the, the.
The same for the twelfth.
The twelfth, and then the mayor will have more than a week to put together the summary. December twelfth.
I'm glad I was listening.
I thought you were right on it. I think you knew we needed to dive a little deeper into that.
All right. Okay, thank you. Next superintendent's report.
All right. You have, you have the report. So staffing update, we're in a great, you know, a great spot right now. We're in the process of hiring Mullen, our teacher, a staff member that left during the summertime. So we have some great candidates there. And then one special education teacher at the Brezlin Hand, which we're in the process of interviewing, and principals are moving those finalists forward to me. And then also the same position for the point-five reading support at the NOK Middle School. So we have candidates, and I think the principal's done the interviewing and moving them forward. So we should be fully staffed. And similar also for our three I A positions throughout the district. So we're in a great shape there. Our school choice, we had one hundred and thirty-four applicants received. At this time, seventy students completed the enrollment process. And then fifty-seven applicants withdrew, and seven are on the waiting list at this time. So our school choice number at this time is seventy throughout the district. And then our daycare update, this is, I think, a lot of credit to, you know, Pam Kaylee, Jim McSweeney, you know, for the district for really thinking this through and really listening to the union regarding childcare needs, all three unions. So we have a daycare will be up and ready. We're all excited. We have three full-time employees, one part-time employee. The, the staff that we have assembled at the daycare is amazing, with tons of experience working with young children. All squads have been taken, and there is a waitlist at this time. And we're working on a ribbon cutting will be scheduled late September. So we're really, really excited. I think when we talk about retaining staff and making Newbury Port as a district that people want to teach in, I think this is going to be a big piece of that. So we, we had a vision, and I think we made it happen. And then also who's been great has been Ipswitch and their Tiger Talks program, because they've had the similar daycare program for twenty years over there. So they've been a great ally of us.
What's the waitlist? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just two quick ones. One on, as a curiosity, do the participants in the Chalkos channel break down by school? Is it primarily Brezlin Hand teachers that are utilizing that?
No, it's throughout the district. So we have.
It's pretty balanced.
Yeah, I, I believe so. I can, I can look. But I know just from having people coming into Central Office and. I can, I can look, but I know just from having people coming into central office and, you know, thanking us, I know there's been some high school staff, middle school staff.
No, that's superb. It's just really great to see you guys. You did that so quickly, and I'm glad you were.
Right, and it's self-sustaining. So when we were kind of, you know, we we had this vision of it, you know, not being a cost to the district. And so as we were rolling this out, that was our hope, but right now, it's no cost to the district, and it's going to be fully funded.
Well done. And then on the school choice, if if there's slots left, say in like Sis trade, there's like five slots, if somebody comes in, presumably those slots are held throughout the duration of the academic year.
No, we usually just, once, once we start.
Okay, that was, yeah. That's good to know.
That's a really good clarifying question, I think.
Yes. So once we, we have that dead, you know, that deadline, and then we have, you know, if there's a waitlist, if there's a couple of students on a waitlist and someone doesn't withdraw us, then those students get in.
Okay.
But we don't carry, we don't carry open seats throughout the school, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What's the daycare enrollment?
I want to, I want to say around twenty. And it's not, like, there are some that are full-time, and there are some that are a couple of days a week.
And what are the age breakdowns?
From little babies to.
Young.
Yeah, very young. So we might need some people burping at lunchtime, so if you, if you still got it.
I'm a good rocker.
Yeah.
And swaddler.
No, so it's, yeah, it's from infants up to age three.
How long is the waitlist? You mentioned there was a waitlist.
There is, I think we have, I want to say, four or five people on the waitlist.
Okay, not huge.
No.
So how did that, was it like a first come, first served, and they just got to you after?
Correct.
You'd filled it?
And PM. And they did a lot of informing the, you know, faculty and making a commitment ahead of time, so, yeah.
Mayor, your question?
No, that was my question.
That was your question.
Oh, how many classrooms?
It's, if you look, if you look, it's going to be broken down.
So they're going to section off this.
Correct. They're going to have a section for infants, then you have a section for like one-year-olds with the three staff managing all of that.
Yeah.
And we also have, as we were talking about early childhood education, we also have some students at the high school that have signed up as interns. They're going to be working in that program.
That's great. So that's a potential for a pathway, right?
That's a definite pathway, yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. The class is liquidier cut.